Council has now returned from executive session and will call to order a meeting of the regularly scheduled Normal Local Liquor Commission meeting. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mr. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. McBride.
Here.
Mrs. Cummings.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
There's really no business on the regularly scheduled meeting except for the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of October 16, 2017, and approval of minutes of this special meeting December 18, 2017. Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Cummings.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. The Liquor Commission is adjourned. Again, we've already convened the meeting of the Normal Town Council at 5:00 and went into executive session, so we're resuming from that point. We will start with a public comment, and we will take those in the order.
Presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Before we do that, we have a presentation of excellence award by the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police for the Normal Police Department's efforts during the Illinois Speed Awareness Day campaign, and so if you would come forward to do that.
Mayor, do you want us to move in?
Yeah.
This is Jim Wolfe with the Illinois Chiefs of Police Traffic Safety Committee. Is that correction?
Go ahead. Mr. Mayor and distinguished guest and council persons for Normal community. My name is James Wolfe, and I am a law enforcement liaison with the Illinois Association's of Chiefs of Police. I am here to recognize the Normal Police Department and their efforts during the Speed Awareness Day effort that was conducted last summer. The Illinois Association Chiefs of Police in partnership with the Families Against Chronic Excessive Speeding worked with Governor Rauner to have July 26, 2017 declared as the Second Annual Speed Awareness Day here in the state of Illinois. One hundred and seventy-five state, county, and local agencies participated in this effort. There was more than 547 hours of public awareness and education committed toward this event, and agencies combined for more than 3,404 patrol hours to try to impact the issue of speeding. Speeding continues to be a leading cause of fatal car crashes and personal injury crashes throughout the state. There were more than 5,800 tickets issued during this event. Normal PD is one of six agencies recognized by the Chiefs Association. That's out of 175 agencies. Normal PD conducted 50 patrol hours of enforcement during that day-long period. They issued 93 citations for speeding, nine written warnings, and 23 other arrests during that detail. They conducted 12 internet announcements, one radio segment, and two press releases. So, again, I'm very honored here to present the chief with the 2017 Speed Awareness Day Excellence Award presented to Normal Police Department in recognition of your outstanding and valuable contributions to keeping Illinois safe.
Thanks, all of you. Thank you. Turn that microphone off.
Yeah.
Give it to Rick.
For legality, we do need another roll call, so please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mr. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. McBride.
Here.
Mrs. Cummings.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
We'll move on to public comment, and we've got five people that want to speak tonight. I think some of you are new. I would go over some of the rules and guidelines that we do have for public comment. We ask you hold your comments two, three minutes. We would like to ask you to give your name and address for the record when you come up to speak. And as this is a business meeting, a formal meeting, we do not allow applause. We do not allow yelling out. We don't allow booing in the meeting. We want to keep this at a high level and a very professional level. So, starting in the order in which the calls came, first up is Andy Streams. And you can go to the center one right there. That microphone is on.
(interviewing) Andy Streams, 611 North Lee, 44th Illinois. Thank you for giving the opportunity. I'm the homeowner of HCP Land Shopping in Normal. My first time working with my family literally a block from down the aisle. My comments tonight pertain to item number 12 on tonight's agenda: Selecting a developer for the lot in Uptown at the corner of Beaufort and Constitution Boulevard. You all received my open letter outlining your reason for being here. The large lot that the town wishes to see developed is adjacent to a continuous row of pre-1900 commercial buildings at 104, 106, and 108 East Beaufort Street. Preliminary accounts show the new building's footprint extending over these buildings, presumably condemning them to the wrecking ball. Indeed, the town already owns two of them, and I have heard that the town has already offered all three to the developer. I know that we are not here tonight to discuss the plan of the new building, and I and many others are concerned with the loss of these buildings, but we're not necessarily in opposition to this development nor the developer. What we are in opposition to is the purposeful destruction of these useful buildings, with each having its own history and architectural details which lend the Uptown its character and definition. I represent a ragtag group of citizens that's formed over the last week. To date, we already have over 870 members. Some of them will speak tonight. Instead of putting up obstructions to your plan, we would like to offer our assistance in coming up with a constructive way which will best serve the town, the developer, and the concerned citizens. In short, we would like to see this new development and retain these historic buildings. I offer you these comments with sincere love for Uptown and the town of Normal. Thank you.
Next up is Christopher Myers.
Testing. This is on. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to express my extreme.
Could you give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Christopher Myers.
Address for the record.
And I live at 2765 Arrowhead Drive in Bloomington. I just wanted to express my extreme concerns when I discovered the town of Normal could possibly demolish the three historic buildings at 104, 106, and 108 East Beaufort Street in Uptown Normal. It infuriates me to no end to think that someone would even fathom of destroying more historic buildings from the town of Normal, let alone three. Downtown Normal is barely even recognizable anymore after the redevelopment project, which, don't get me wrong, was great for the community, but we don't need yet another massive high-rise building in Uptown. Enough is enough. If we simply must build another massive complex uptown, there must be a way to do so without destroying more history. These old buildings are what keeps downtown's heart and soul alive within uptown. They add character and beauty to the community we live in. These buildings are not dilapidated or falling apart. They are perfectly good, strong, solid buildings that have stayed standing for more than 130 years. They deserve to remain and serve our community for another century and beyond. Secondly, you would also be destroying the beautifully painted mural on the side of Building 104. This mural was created by more than 50 individual contributors of all ages within our community. It is a landmark and staple of uptown and deserves to stay that way. There must be a way to tweak the blueprint layout to work these buildings beside the buildings currently standing instead of demolishing them. I advise you all to heavily reconsider this proposal and think about just how much history and beauty you would be destroying if this plan passes as is. Please, don't erase history. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul Harmon.
Paul Harmon, 1762 Locksboro Way, Normal, and I'm here to speak on 12 and 13 on general orders. First, BN Advantage. I served as the first chairman of the BN Advantage, and tonight you are considering funding for workforce development, quality of life, and marketing. These are extremely important and an important part of BN Advantage, and I support the city manager's recommendation, but also needed our measurables, accountability, and private sector funding because the private sector will benefit immeasurably from the success of BNA. The original funding goal was 75% private, 25% public, and I believe that you should continue to work towards achieving that kind of a funding goal. As to the Uptown building, I served as the first chairman of the Downtown Committee when we started the work on what is now Uptown, and this was in the early 2000. Development has progressed amazingly well, and I have always felt that the most difficult part would be the two buildings on Constitution Boulevard. But tonight's proposed building for the east side of the Boulevard has everything uptown needs to continue to flourish. It has retail, professional offices, and residential. All of these are needed in order to make the uptown continue to flourish in the future, and I congratulate you on your perseverance.
Our next speaker is Dawn Peters.
As the owner of the Mandel House, which was moved to be saved from demolition, as a Realtor in the community specializing in old houses, and as a board member of the Old House Society, I oppose any proposal, obviously, that includes the demolition of any intact old buildings. Demolition is both financially irresponsible and unsustainable and takes away the connection to those who came before us. Old buildings foster community, spark creativity, and transcend any given point in time. I know that there is a win-win solution to continue the development in uptown while also maintaining these historic buildings, and I'm excited about any opportunity to help find that solution.
And our final speaker is Mark Turetilly.
Mark Turetilly, 1212 Timber Ridge Court here in Normal. I want to start out by thanking all the town staff who've been working through these very trying conditions the last few weeks. The roads are looking good, they're safe, and I know that other work besides snow removal takes place in the bitter cold, so thank you, everyone, once again. I'm here to talk tonight about the Trail East project, and like many others have said, overall, I'm in favor of this, and I think it's going to come down to how this project is executed. I want to see this done with integrity, and I think that starts with the concerns over the old buildings. As some people have pointed out, it's in the original plan that those buildings be preserved. It is tougher to figure out how this wonderful project could go forward, but I think we're up to that challenge, and I, like many others, would love to see those old buildings preserved and incorporated into the design. But to me, integrity goes beyond that. I want to see us do this without incurring more debt for the town. That should be possible. We just took some positive steps in terms of refinancing. Let's not negate that by piling on more debt to the high levels that we already have. I think integrity involves getting a fair price for the land that the town owns. Giving it away is not stewarding our resources. We demand that people protect our workers with prevailing wage. We should protect the town's assets and the taxpayers' investments by getting fair market value. The TIF funds, I agree with this financing portion. That's why the TIF district was created, but I hope that we will not be tempted to try and extend the TIF district beyond its expiration in six years. That money has been promised over and over again to the schools, the libraries, and all the other taxing bodies. Once Normal's developed, they finally reap the benefit. We can't go back on that promise, so we need to maintain the integrity of this project. And the last part would be the tax credit that's being considered for this, the new market tax credit. It sounds intriguing, but if you look at it, it's for low-income distressed communities, and I don't think that defines uptown Normal. It's a zero-sum game, so there's a certain allocation, and as money is given to one project, it's not available for others. Imagine how we'd feel if we were a downstate community that truly was distressed and lost our project to a community that is already very well off, more so than most other places in the state. So, I'm all for finding some good creative financing, but I don't know if this vehicle fits, and we might be able to manipulate some numbers based on median family income, but I don't think that would fit the spirit of this. So, overall, I'd like to see us make this a project that everybody could be proud of. If you take away the divisive elements of how it's financed and how it's constructed and how we preserve the great things that are already present in uptown, I think everyone would be on board with this. It sounds like a great idea. Let's do this in a way that overcomes those challenges and maintains the values and the integrity that we want to see going forward. Thank you.
We now move on to the omnibus agenda. Items that are considered routine in nature will be handled by one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. I would like to be excused from voting on any bills. I may have incurred my duties as mayor. Move approval. Second. Thank you. Items being considered on the omnibus tonight are the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 2, 2018, approval of town of Normal expenditures for payment as of January 10, 2018, motion to initiate a zoning map amendment at 602 and 604 North Adelaide, Sudeth Road right-of-way, parking lot at the southeast corner of West Beaufort and School Street, the underpass, 404 West Locust, 404 Normal, 507 Osage, and 305 Pine Street. A resolution authorizing the quotes for installation of new water heaters in the total amount of $470, I'm sorry, $47,233 for Anderson Aquatic Center and approval of an associated budget adjustment. A resolution approving the executive session minutes of January 2, 2018, and considering the public release of executive session minutes from July 17, 2017, August 11, August 21, September 18, October 2, 2017, and January 2, 2018. Please call the roll.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Cummings.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. The omnibus agenda is approved. We have two items of general orders tonight. The first is a resolution authorizing negotiation of a development agreement with Bus Construction of Davenport, Iowa for the development of the proposed Trail East project. Move approval. Thank you. Second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just as a way of intro, if I may, just to clarify, what we are asking the council to do tonight is to affirm the selection of a developer. There is no plan, contrary to one of the speakers' suggestion that you deny the plan. There is no plan. The plan, there's, I guess, a concept, some ideas, but it's going to require substantial work to reach a point where the developer brings back to the council a plan for your review and formal consideration. At that point, obviously, it becomes a matter of public record, and members of the public will have the opportunity to weigh in on that plan. There also has been no decision made regarding any existing buildings in uptown. There have been no buildings offered to the developer. We do understand that there may be the need to consider removing buildings, but obviously that's a consideration that will, the council will have to address. The council controls the plan because you control the land, so you will have the opportunity to review and either approve, amend, or deny any plan that's ultimately presented. And I would further say the financing of the project is still uncertain. Again, the developer included in their proposal some ideas, but none of those is etched in granite, and that will be flushed out as we, assuming if you agree with the staff recommendation and select this developer, the staff will be working through those details with the developer over the coming months, and it's probably, you know, at least a 90-day period before we will have something to come back to you to have you consider. So, we, there are representatives from the developer here tonight that have the opportunity to listen to the public comment. Staff met with them later today and had a good conversation, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have. Sally Heffernan is in the audience somewhere. Sally is raising her hand. She's able to come up and talk about specifics on the RFP. She did sort of manage this project from developing the RFP and getting and soliciting proposals, as you know, and as indicated in the staff report, we had three responsive proposals, and after reviewing those, staff felt that Bus Construction of Davenport, Iowa was the best selection for this project, yet there's a lot of work yet to be done, and this is something that will evolve over the coming months. So, with that, we'll be prepared to respond to any questions you may have regarding this proposal.
Mrs. Cummings.
First, I would like to thank everyone who spoke during public comment. We always appreciate hearing from our residents and hearing what's on your heart. Thank you, Mark, for clarifying that because I was going to ask if I need to take back remedial reading classes because I didn't understand what I was reading, maybe because my assumption was what you kind of explained. So, I appreciate that, making sure I still could read. And so, we're looking, it says, and you can clarify, right now, you're looking towards if we select Bush, that it would be close to the fall before we would even see anything to review, correct?
I think it would be sooner than that, likely.
Okay.
But it would be probably at least 90 days.
Okay.
But probably sometime, you know, late spring, early summer before we'd be back to you with any specific details regarding the plan itself and financing and those kinds of things, but I think staff, as well as the developer, are committed to rolling up our sleeves and getting to work quickly to try to begin to, I guess, develop more details for you to consider, but again, there's a lot of work to be done between now and the point where you are facing some additional decisions.
Well, I would like to thank you for that information, and just one little small tidbit, if I may. I want to share with you briefly and just, you know, be encouraged and understand that it is a process to our constituents and our residents. Change is hard, but we won't do anything- Change is hard, but we won't do anything that damages our community. Understand we'll consider our community first, and this is a good opportunity that we're looking at. We will do our best, but change is always difficult. And think back, especially in this historical week that we sit in, if 1964 wouldn't have ever happened, I wouldn't be sitting here, and that was a hard change for people, because an institution had been put in place that people were comfortable with. So we get comfortable, and we know that sometimes change is difficult to receive, and we're always open to your feedback and want to hear from you, but we're just not there yet. So be patient with us, know that we've heard your comments, we have you in mind, and just stay with us on this journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lorenz?
I just would like to also thank the members who spoke today for public comment, and I was particularly encouraged by the win-win comment or sentiment that was offered by a couple of you, that, you know, although there may be differing opinions about, you know, historical and art and a lot of these issues that can be, you know, varied across different opinions, I was particularly encouraged by the fact that those of you who spoke are saying, you know, hey, we're here, we want to be part of the process, so thank you for that. And then a question, maybe more for staff, that I think I heard in comment to clarify, is this area that's being considered, this Trail East project, was it part of the original Uptown plan?
It was.
And did it assume in that original plan that some of the last buildings, if you will, on either side, east and west, might be subject to demolition in that plan?
Oh, that's correct. The plan that was adopted by the council back in 2001 did envision, first of all, a multi-story building at this location, what I call the northeast corner of the circle, if there's such a thing, and that that, it envisioned that that building would run the length of Constitution Boulevard down to College Avenue, so similar to what's been proposed. It also, at the time, envisioned that at least one building on the end would likely have to be removed in order to accommodate enough space to make that building fit along the circle. Now, we're not saying that's going to happen, but that's certainly what was envisioned with the plan. In addition, I might comment on the other side, on the west side of Constitution Boulevard with, again, there's also envisioned another building there, multi-story, four to six stories, and that, they also, at that point, envisioned that both of the buildings on the end, I think it's 102 and 104 West Beaufort, would likely have to be raised in order to accommodate that development. In response to that plan, the town acquired all three of those buildings with the understanding that that might be possible, might be, might be a need. It's still not certain, and we still don't know, and that's what we're going to study, is it necessary to remove those buildings on both sides, and, or is there a way to work around it and accommodate those buildings? So we'll, you know, that's something we're going to work through with the developer.
Good. And I guess just lastly, I would like to say that, you know, let's not lose sight of the fact that we have an opportunity here for new construction, and construction crane's in the air, and nothing speaks more of a vibrant community than to have a construction crane in the air. Recently, I was traveling to Charlotte, North Carolina, and it seemed like there was construction on every block, it seemed like, and that is a very vibrant community. So it's not lost on me, especially since our next item has to do with economic development, that this is potentially a very, very, very good opportunity, and thank you to the staff, Sally in particular, for shepherding this and selecting the group that we've got here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. First, I want to offer my thank you. I know it can be intimidating to come sit down at a microphone and talk at a council meeting, but particularly, I want to point out the respectful nature of the comments. We don't always get that, so I appreciate everybody who was respectful and really proactive. I too appreciate the, I believe it was, offer assistance, not opposition statement by a few of you, and I, for one, will be in this process going forward with that look. I'm glad to hear that we're already, as I would expect from staff, proactively considering the options of how we can, can we achieve objectives and save, or can we save some? What's really our options going forward while we're trying to achieve both, save what we can save, but at the same time, not miss out on a really good opportunity for Normal, not just Uptown, but for all of Normal, to bring that kind of business into our central core district and the amount of jobs that that will likely be bringing, and the amount of revenue and business to our Uptown businesses, and so it's a bit of a curveball for us, but I'm, I'll be there as a partner in considering whether or not we can save and what we can.
Mr. McBride?
Well, I suppose it would be a problem if I didn't also thank everyone, but we really do appreciate it, and again, to my colleagues' remarks about it being respectful and looking for opportunities for win-wins, and I think that speaks a lot about us as a community, so thank you for that. There will be ample time for public input, I'm sure, as this process moves on. This is just stage one, and we're agreeing to work with a developer, assuming we pass this resolution tonight. I think sometimes, you know, there are a lot of questions, obviously, still out there. The financing, the footprint, the design, chief among them. So again, we have a long way to go. I do think we sometimes live in an era, clearly, of hot takes. I think everybody knows what I mean when I say a hot take, and that's just, we're instantly reacting, it's a gut visceral reaction to whatever happens, and I think sometimes those get out ahead of the facts. So again, I want to stress, and I appreciate the passion that those who have contacted us have for historic preservation, but we're not even there yet. Nothing says that, you know, architects can do some amazing things, and perhaps they can incorporate or work around the building, or the mural, or perhaps not, and we'll see that as we go forward. I also do want to address the town's record of historic preservation, which is not unblemished, but I think is, in aggregate, very, very solid, and we have taken in recent years some moves, and we have made some decisions on historic preservation, and when we have done that, those have not been without opposition. So I would ask that folks keep those past decisions in mind. And lastly, I can't, and forgive the journalism term here, but I can't help to Ms. Lorenz's comments, feel like we're burying the lead a little bit here. We have, we have a developer from outside our community that is very interested in developing and making a major investment in our community. We have a couple of employers that are interested in putting their workforce in our Uptown area, and I think that's very exciting, and I think we should be talking about that and at least not forgetting it. That is a big deal, and it's not something that is happening all that often in communities our size. So I appreciate everybody's comment, but I am, at least at stage one of this, very proud to support the resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Fritzson?
I appreciate all the input, not just tonight, but via email, particularly some that wrote it a bit more length that I printed out so that I could read them rather than staring at a screen for a period of time, but I think some heartfelt remarks there, and again, those are appreciated. Just a couple of things. One, to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. McBride just mentioned, the first thought I had when I started receiving some of the input was that, well, my goodness, you know, the whole Uptown redevelopment started when we decided to save the Normal Theater, you know, and do that with public funds, and got a lot of cooperation from different groups in the community, laborers and others who donated a lot of time on that, but we started saving historic, the historic aspect of what was still then Downtown Normal a long time ago by restoring the theater. And had we not done that, you know, who's to say, but what else might not have survived had we not done that initially? So that was a thought that came to me early. In this particular area of Uptown, you know, we work closely with Harry Fuller with his redevelopments and on both sides of Beaufort, with Maggie Myles, and then his own business right across from these properties, really. So quite a bit is, you know, there's myriad other things with the facade grants and a lot that we've done to make sure that the downtown area that we renamed Uptown retained, you know, some of its historic nature and appearance, and, you know, I, for one who, as a youth, you know, made his way on a bike to Randall's Five and Dime, was glad to see the aluminum facade removed from that building and some of its neighbors there as well and returned to a more original look. So, you know, I've seen, I've seen the faux cover, cover-up of the old buildings come, and now I've seen it go, so I guess my life's complete. Anyway, I think Medici is a good example of a compatible drop-in. You know, here's, here's a property that didn't really fit with the, already, you know, with the properties around it, and it even got a better look, you know, when a new development came in. So I don't, I think we need to be careful not to fear new development too much, and heck, they even dropped a tree down into the middle of it, you know, so whoever thought that when we first started talking about redeveloping Uptown Normal? A couple of things, too, and not just with this particular development, but over the past few years, we, there seems to be occasionally a negative tone when the developers from outside Bloomington Normal, and the fact of the matter is, the developers who are willing to come in here and invest in our community are coming from outside Bloomington Normal. They're not local. We don't have a pool of local developers who are willing to risk, right now, a large development of this nature, you know, so I don't think, I think we need to be careful not to have a negative tone just because somebody's from outside our community. I think we should be proud of the fact that somebody sees value in developing here and investing here with us, and helping us, you know, grow and achieve our goals and our successes. So I think that's a caution I just threw out there. Another aspect of this, you know, Uptown started out, between then and now, there, you know, there was the Great Recession and a quiet period for development, you know, with, you know, the apartments opening and the new town offices, you know, opening in, again, first floor's not finished yet, but on the circle, one uptown on the circle, is that the right? Went through several variations there, but, you know, that development went through a myriad of issues, trying to put together financing, and, you know, we got the hole in the ground out of that, and now we have a building covering up the hole that's a very viable building, and, you know, that first floor will be filled, folks. It's not that nobody wants to be there, it's just that the developer wants to make sure that the right thing is there, and I think that's, again, to be commended, because that costs money for that space to sit there empty, and so rather than rush to put something in there that may not meet our needs or meet their needs, there's some patience there, and I think that's, that's a good thing. But, you know, if, if, if the economy's uptick is real and new development is on the horizon, then, as was mentioned earlier, the original FAR plan had both of these parcels, east, Trail East and Trail West, targeted for this type of development. So that plan's been around for, you know, fifteen years or so, so we shouldn't be surprised that these types of things are being proposed, it's just that we kind of like what's developed up here, and that's what we're used to, and, you know, there could be some change here. But again, we're looking at an agreement with a developer who can come in and I think will show some sensitivity to the surroundings. I mean, we have an Uptown Commission that looks at these things as well besides us, and certain requirements that we put in policy-wise to encourage certain types of development when it comes to environmental friendliness and things of that nature, so I think we've put in place some things to protect us from just somebody coming in and throwing up, you know, some structure that doesn't fit. One other thing that, you know, the Farnsworth Company kind of brought this forward and started talking about wanting to bring together their forces that are, you know, in at least a couple of places that I'm aware of in the community, and again, for them to say, Uptown Normal's the place we'd like to be, you know, they have people in Uptown Normal now and elsewhere, but, you know, for them to say, this is, this is the place where we'd like to congregate, I think that's important. And Farnsworth's really a legacy company for our community, you know, so there's so much stirred up in our community over some of our legacy companies, here's one that says, we want to be here and this is where we want to be, and I think we should be excited about that as well. And I can't help but think of the times early on when I was on the council with Sam Wiley, because it used to be Farnsworth and Wiley, not just Farnsworth. Sam Wiley was our city engineer, and there wasn't a meeting that went by, really, when Sam was called on and Sam would stand up and talk about the infrastructure of the town of Normal, because it was all up here, you know, and he knew where all the sewers were and where all the water lines ran, and a question would come up, and he'd just dutifully get up and come forward and explain to all of us, here's what you got, here's what you're dealing with here. And, you know, we're at a lot more sophisticated level now than that, but we were served well by that, and he, you know, he was part of that legacy company that wants to invest in putting their people in an environment that we all like, that you all like, that's why you're here. So I think we should, again, be proud of that, that they want to be here and be part of that, and I think they, as a fact, you know, and the fact that they want to invest deeper in the community, we should trust that, you know, their idea of it is, we like this place, and we talk about this sense of place, and they like it, and they want everybody that works for them to be part of it, and to shop here and eat here and sit around the circle just like others do. So, you know, to me, it's a, it's an exciting opportunity, and one that I think we need to be, I think there's, there's been enough expressed tonight, both from, you know, you folks and via email and by this body, and the developer being in the room, I can't help but believe that, you know, whatever, whatever comes forward is going to be something that is sensitive and understands what it is that we've done in Uptown Normal and want to continue to do.
Thank you. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you to Mr. Strenz, Mr. Myers, Mayor Harmon, Ms. Peters, and Mr. Turatili for speaking tonight. I must say that we, as has been referred to up here before, after receiving so many emails over this last week or so about these three pieces of property that have been the subject of tonight's conversation, I have gained a greater appreciation for them. I have personally gone over and kind of walked the site, and I must tell you that if somebody gave me a blank sheet of paper, I would not have been able to draw what the front facades of those three buildings looked like before this past week, but I could half draw it now, and I thank you for bringing that up, and really appreciate, too, the nature and the tone of the comments tonight, being focused on being constructive and being productive and wanting to work together as a win-win. You know, unless I misinterpreted the comments that were made during public, during the public portion at the beginning, it doesn't sound to me like there is just blatant opposition to any kind of new development in this area. I mean, when you're talking Constitution Boulevard down to College Avenue, I didn't gather that that is the issue. And, you know, in the spirit of wanting to be constructive and working together for the win-win, stick with it, and let's do it, and let's take advantage of this tremendous opportunity that we have together with Busch Construction, who wants to invest, you know, likely close to thirty million dollars in our community, and let's do it together, and I look forward to your voices and many others continuing to be part of this lengthy process over the coming months that we're just now beginning. Thanks.
Thank you. There's been a few comments of irony here. I think I should share my own.
I think I should share my own comment on irony. The last time I sat in a, as a member of a public body in front of a group of people that had similar name tags on it was when I was Historic Preservation Chair and the issue was the formation of Cedar Crest Historic District and the people wearing the badges said, "Don't do that. It's not worth saving our history." So, there are, there are opinions out there back and forth, but I think the message is clear here tonight from this council. This council is open. This council will try to do the right thing for the community, whatever that is. They will be making tough decisions that they will have to make and they will have to make tough decisions with the citizens of the town of Normal. They will have to make tough decisions with the development group as this unfolds. But this body has always been a deliberative body, has listened to people, has taken input and comment and worked it into their thought process to make the project the best project it can be.
Further? Please call the board.
Mrs. Cummings?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item 13 is a resolution approving the 2018 funding recommendation for the BN Advantage Economic Development Initiative and, and accompanying necessary budget adjustment.
With approval.
Okay.
Discussion on this item. Mrs. Lorenz?
I, I do have some, some questions and I, I don't know if we want to maybe air out some other questions as well, but I'll, I'll get it started. You know, as I look at this opportunity to fund and support economic development and particularly Bloomington BN Advantage, you know, I want to support it because as we're just talking, economic development is so important for our community. And it's probably outside of your core services of police and fire and public works and so forth, you know, some of the most important issues that we can, can deal with here on, is, is economic development. And yet I find myself with a lot more questions that, that make me feel a little uncomfortable about the investment that's being asked of us here. And, you know, a couple of the questions, I guess, that I'd, I'd want to know is, you know, where's the presentation? Where's, where's the, you know, what's been done with the money to date? What's, what are the plans for the money that's being asked? I mean, there's some headlines there, but, but I don't really see some examples of what it might be for. One of our public commentators, Mayor Harmon, spoke about the private investment that's important. The initial plan was to have a 75%, 25% breakdown of private versus public. Where are we with that? Do we have private investment and if so, to what extent? These are kind of some key things that are missing from tonight's decision and that's troubling to me. I went back and looked at a similar conversation on this topic that the county board had earlier this month and, you know, a couple of things I jotted down. One, one county board member indicated, you know, that more transparency is needed along the lines of what I'm asking for, you know? What's the money been used for? What's it going to be used for? They were quoted as saying, "For their own self-preservation, they might want to give us good reports." Another member indicated that there's been a decreased communication since some previous staff members have left, which leads me to believe that what we're asking here is not unusual, it's maybe just something we've gotten away from. And so, we need to have more of that transparency. Yet another county, county board member said, you know, "It's totally reasonable and really necessary for us as elected representatives of our community to understand the return on investment so that we can be accountable to the taxpayers of how the money is being spent." So, I don't think what I'm asking here is really outrageous. There are questions that have actually been raised in a, in a previous public setting with the county. So, I'm concerned about that. I want to vote yes for this, but I'm concerned with the amount of information that is lacking and whether there's somebody here that can speak to that or if staff wants to speak to that, my colleagues want to respond, I'm, I'd like to hear more about that.
Could I, or do you want to? If I could, those are good questions. Ms. Lorenz, I will say a couple of things. There were, I think Charlie Moore is here. He was here. Hi, Charlie. How are you doing? Back from a vacation, I guess. Charlie Moore, along with Colleen Kennedy and a few other people, came and met with Mayor Kous and myself and talked about the request and gave, did give some specifics as to how they plan to use the money. You ask about past use, this would be the first time we're actually being asked to commit funding to BN Advantage. Up until this point, the funding has come from, I think, the, the six agencies that were listed in the report, Chamber of Commerce being one, and there may be, there may have been some private funding, but most of it was from the six agencies. This request came to the staff probably late fall, early winter and we did discuss funding with our governmental partners, the City of Bloomington and the county. Both of those did take action. The county, as was pointed out in the report, chose not to provide any funding for BN Advantage specifically. The city, on the other hand, did provide funding and that's outlined in the, in the report that you were provided. I will tell you that, and also Mayor Kous and I serve on the BN Advantage Leadership Council, so we get regular updates from those agencies that are really responsible for boots on the ground, actually carrying out the work of BN Advantage. And really, it's just starting. I mean, we're just getting started. But I would say that based upon an American, weigh in on this as well, based upon what we see, those, those pieces of BN Advantage that are being coordinated by the Chamber of Commerce, specifically workforce development and quality of place, quality of life have moved, they've done a lot of work, particularly in workforce development, yeoman's effort there over the last couple of years, they have done a lot of work and made, in my mind, excellent progress. And quality of place, quality of life's not quite as far along. Of course, they're not asking for a whole lot of dollars there, but some, and they definitely appear to be moving forward. I would also say, the marketing and communications piece, which one of your colleagues chairs that committee and that is embedded in the EDC, has made tremendous progress with no benefit of our investment yet, but I think they have very reasonable and ambitious plans to continue to move forward with marketing and communications. The, I would say the other piece that's not reflected here is being coordinated by the McLean County Regional Planning Commission and that's metrics and data analysis and measurement. Again, good progress, not done, long way to go, but they have made excellent progress. The one area that I think we all feel that we have made little or no progress on is on the entrepreneurship piece. That's the other, one of the, the major pillars of BN Advantage. That project is embedded in the Economic Development Council and that has moved very little over the last two years. And that frankly is some of the concern reflected in my memo to you about additional funding for that agency that would be used, a lot of that for entrepreneurship that really hasn't shown really any progress to date. And that's why I certainly am reticent to recommend more funding to that organization based upon what we've seen thus far. So, and I think, you know, I'm hopeful that, that message is clearly sent here if indeed this is the, if the council approves this recommendation. And I would expect that, that agency would work hard to try to, try to reverse that situation and, and maybe come back at a later date and say, you know, "If we feel better about how they're, the progress they're making, maybe the council would reconsider and provide them with additional funding." That remains to be seen. But, we did not ask Mr. Moore or Ms. Kennedy to come in and do a full-blown presentation. We can do that. I'm sure they're willing to do that.
Okay.
But, we didn't specifically ask for it. So, hopefully that'll help. I don't know, Mayor, if you have anything to add to that?
I think you pretty much covered it.
Okay.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. I guess when we're talking about funding this, we're talking about a few different things, BN Advantage, talking about funding in the larger conversation, EDC chamber, some of our ED, Economic Development or Community Development Agencies, talking with our counterparts, some of our counterparts on the county board, some of my counterparts on Bloomington City Council. I, I think the concerns over transparency and accountability are very reasonable. I think what we're asking is extremely reasonable. What's the plan to, to, for the money? How you, how you think you're going to spend it? And then also, what can we reasonably expect as, as an outcome from this investment? I, first I want to say I'm a supporter of the BN Advantage Plan. I think collaborative, cooperative, community-wide, even regionally-wide effort to develop our community is what's necessary. If we look at the job shifts in our community, the loss of labor force in our community over the last several years, I think by one estimate somewhere in the, I've heard estimates that range from between five and 9,000 jobs in the last three to six or seven years. That's a lot of jobs for a community our size. We need to be able to do something like BN Advantage to continue to be competitive and thrive here. So, I'm first here to say that I'm a big, ardent supporter of this, but we do need to have this be a transparent and an accountable process as good stewards of your money. I think that it's reasonable for us to expect some regular monthly reporting as you've suggested, Mr. Peterson. I fully support that kind of approach. But I'm a little concerned, I guess I want to say this out loud, that we haven't got a response from our private sector. And I've sat down with a few, heads of a few companies here to just try to understand what's going on out there. And we are putting some money into this and we've been supporting these agencies for quite a while, not specifically for BN Advantage, but I, I invite our corporate and business partners to invest. The business community is going to be the largest recipient of the benefits of the return on this investment. Houses will get built, businesses will start, jobs will be created if these plans happen, which means all of our businesses thrive. I'm still a little perplexed why our business community is hesitant to invest in BN Advantage. And I'm really actually hoping that we can call for a community conversation about this. If there's a problem that our business community doesn't see the ROI or the value, then maybe we have the wrong plan or maybe we have the wrong players. I'm not sure what the answer is. But right now, our business community not being willing to invest in community development and community future is a problem. It's a problem. And I hope we can see that change. I hope we have our business leaders have faith in our community and wanted to invest in the future and that we can have a conversation about what the hesitancy is to do so. But as far as this proposal goes, I'm certainly in favor of greater transparency and a little more regular reporting for our contributions.
Mr. McBride?
I'll try not to be too repetitive here, but I'll also try not to meander too much. I've been known to do that, but I feel a little boxed in on this because the fact is, as a community, public and private sector, we are not investing enough money in economic development. We have had a tradition in this community, we have been very fortunate, "Oh, we have these wonderful large employers. We have this great educational community. We have three interstates." People will just, people will just come. There's no need for us to go out and really work for this. And the fact is, that game has changed and that's a whole nother discussion. So, on one hand, I want to, and I wish we could invest more. I will echo Mr. McCarthy's statement that I, I think we are due for a full community conversation on why the private sector is not more involved in this at this point. Is it because they can't afford it? Is it because they don't see the benefit? It's hard, it's very difficult to pinpoint an ROI on this. You know you're, you know, you're either succeeding, you're getting better or you're not. So, I don't know that you can necessarily come back with a return on investment number, but I, I would really like to see us have that conversation. So, on one hand, we're not spending enough as an entire community. On the other hand, we have not seen the transparency and we have not seen the reporting and we've not seen, I would say, in some cases, not in all, because there is some very good work being done, we haven't seen the leadership that we need to see. So, I, I'm hesitant to just continue to invest blindly in things. So, I think it's the right thing to do. As Mr. Peterson mentioned, I've been chairing the Marketing Communication Task Force. I'm very proud of the work that that group has done, but all the work we have done to this point is actual creative labor. We don't, we haven't had any money to produce anything, we haven't had any money to buy any ads outside of the community or really get to work outside of the community. This'll, this'll maybe start that. I'm excited about that. But, yeah, we need to, I would like to see a little bit more accountability and a much broader discussion moving forward. Thank you.
I, I think I would add too, as we started this discussion a while back, we had actually budgeted significantly more dollars for economic development because we realized as a community the importance and the need, given what's happening in our local markets and in our community, for the need of economic development initiatives in the community. And as Mark is famous for pointing out, the dollar amount we are spending on economic development tonight is less than we spend on road salt. Now, road salt may be more important today, but in a 365-day cycle, it's probably not. We spend more money on parking enforcement than we do on economic development. So, to put that in perspective, we need to step up, the private sector needs to step up. But I will certainly stand behind every comment tonight that we need to know what we're getting for our dollar, just like we need to know how much road salt we're using and how effective it is. We need to know how much effect our economic development dollars have.
Further? Please.
Go ahead.
One thing I wanted to add, recently organized by the chamber, we took a trip to a few different communities in Arkansas and we saw some really great models. No offense to Conway, Arkansas, but if you can believe it, they are far less geographically interesting than we are, if you can believe that. But they're doing a great job with what they're doing. And the, they've got a, a long tradition of business and private investment in economic development in the community and it's driven by the business sector, but their model is reversed. Their economic development efforts are funded 80% by the business community and 20% or less by municipal tax dollars. We were stunned, to say the least, because it's quite the opposite here. It's, sometimes I would imagine over 80% funded by the municipal governments and your tax dollars. And so, we got our eyes opened quite a lot by a small community that looks a lot like us, has universities in them, proximal to some highways, has a lot of the same assets, but really seem to be getting it done a lot better than we are. So, there's a model for this. We didn't invent this, but we came back with some really hard questions to start to ask about how we're doing what we're doing and how do we start to get it done better.
Ms. Lorenz?
Well, in, in follow-up to the issues that I set forth earlier, I'll ask a question of, of this group and staff. Would it be reasonable to ask for a formal presentation here within the next, you know, fairly short amount of time, next meeting or two that, you know, we would have time on the agenda, to answer some of these questions? And, and in essence, you know, before the first check is cut, so to speak, to, to have a, at least begin that community conversation in a public forum here via a presentation that begins to answer some of these questions? Because in essence, I think what's being asked of us, and, and I'm okay with this, that on the good faith and trust that we have in the good people who are leading the BN Advantage effort, that they're going to be good stewards
BN Advantage effort, that they're going to be good stewards of this, of this money. However, they, to, to date, have not been very forthcoming on what's going to be done with that money. So on good faith and trust, we can move forward on this, however, I would like to request, without necessarily, if we don't have to, you know, amending the motion or anything, but just a, a statement publicly that we would like for a, a presentation to occur.
I think you just did that.
If I, if I could add, I just want to, you know, I just want to be fair here. I think they are willing, and I, I think similar request was made by the city of Bloomington. We want to hear from you on a very regular basis, find out what you're doing, how you're spending your money, what you're, and I think, I think what I heard from the folks representing BN Advantage at that meeting is that absolutely, we'll do that. So I think going forward, that's clearly going to be an expectation, and I think they'd be, most of them would be more than happy to come and talk about what they're doing, what they have done, and what they're going to do, particularly the chamber folks and, and some of the others that have been so, but absolutely, we can ask them to come, and, and I think the idea, what I'm hearing, is you want to come more than once on a pretty regular basis, and let us know, both in terms of a, of a written report, we can look at, but occasionally come and provide a presentation on where we're at, what we're doing, and, and I suspect that they will be more than happy to do that.
Fair enough.
Mr. McBride?
Just a, a very quick addition to that. Not only, I, I think is that very beneficial for us, but I also think that that's very beneficial for the BN Advantage effort, not only for transparency, but also, I mean, the fact is, we need some buy-in. We, we need local buy-in to get people excited about this. The fact is, you know, not to put it necessarily in sales terms, but Bloomington Normal and McLean County are great products to sell, but we need to generate some, we need to get some buy-in, we need to generate some excitement here locally, and I think some presentations, not to put too much pressure on a PowerPoint, but I think some presentations, some presentations would do that.
Thank you.
Can I add one other thing, I think, just to address a concern that was raised about this public-private split, and Mayor Harmon, who spoke earlier, was right. I think that was the initial objective of BN Advantage, to generate 75% of their money from private sources and 25% from the public sector. I think if you, if you talk to those folks today, they'll, they'll say that was probably a little bit of an ambitious goal in terms of private sector, that I think they're struggling to get there, they're now looking at more at a 60-40 split, which, you know, I don't know how you feel about that, but I think that's more realistic. The latest numbers I received from BN Advantage is they, they have about $215,000 in private sector commitments for 2018. That compares to what, given what the city of Bloomington has already approved, and what you are considering tonight, that would be 180,000 in public sector commitments. Well, that's not 60-40, that's, it's not quite 50-50, but it's like, so I, I think if it was 60-40, the private sector would have to be closer to 260,000 to offset the 180 of, of public, and I think that's still a little disappointing. I think we were all hoping to get stronger private sector support, and that, and, and I will say, they still have a number of requests out to private sector employers waiting to get commitments, so that 215 they expect will grow. The question is, how, how much will it grow and how quickly? But I just wanted to provide that, those numbers, just provide a little context of the, the differences between public and private support.
And in anticipation of your question, Mr. McBride, those, those are cash donations, there's no in-kind in there?
No in-kind.
Nicely done.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzson?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. We have no new business before taking a motion for adjournment. Are there comments and concerns? Mr. McBride?
A comment that a quiet zone might be the greatest thing ever, or at least, at least in the top 10.
Yeah. Motion for adjournment?
I was so close. So moved.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzson?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Cummings?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned.[1786.76]